Pennsylvania, Virginia, North Carolina, and Florida. Our state had reached a point of real desperation. We needed to do some radical things differently. Dug out of the hole. Now we have to move the state and its people forward. Because I believe that if we give you some economic relief, help support your families, to put food on the table, if we can make our education system better for everyone, if we can change our criminal justice system, then we're going towards a place we can be proud of. Sometimes you may look at me and think I'm spoiling for a fight. Not all the time. But I tell you this, I'm gonna fight for the things that are worth fighting for. My mother used to tell me all the time, Christopher, be yourself. Because if you are, then you're not gonna have to worry tomorrow about remembering who you pretended to be yesterday. So ladies and gentlemen, this is it. What you see is what you get.
Ladies and gentlemen, Governor Chris Christie.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much. Man, it's good to be home today. Good to be home. Great to be in East Hanover. Thank you. Thank you all so much for coming today. Had a great group here today, and finally, a nice day. These couple of days have been pretty ugly, and I'm glad to have a beautiful day today. And we're gonna have some time to talk together today about the issues that are important in our state and what we're trying to do to deal with them. Got so many friends here, I'm not gonna start picking out friends to introduce them. We got a lot of elected officials here and folks who have been really good to me throughout my entire career. But I'll just, I'll just pick out one. This is a guy who served with me in my first elected office in 1995, when I became a county freeholder at the age of 31. You can imagine what a handful I was at 31. And one of the guys who was trying to handle me back then is here today. He's still the mayor of the community of Carring, the mayor of Morris Plains, but he was my freeholder colleague back then, Mayor Frank Drutler. Frank, thanks for being here. We're gonna send members of the legislature to you, Frank, for counseling on how to deal with me. I think it will do really well. You know, we had a video that we put out yesterday, because last night, we had what's called the Legislative Correspondence Dinner in Trenton. This is when the press corps that covers me every day gets together and tries to sing and dance and make fun of me. They weren't very good at the singing and dancing. And then at the end of it, I'm supposed to go up and give a funny speech. And we did this video that some of you may have already seen, that's out there, where I did a video with Mayor Cory Booker of Newark. And we made fun of two things in the video. You know, we made fun of all this stuff about me running for Vice President of the United States, and we made fun of Booker running into that building and saving the woman during the fire. And so, we tried to switch roles. You know, I was looking for somebody to save, and Booker was on the phone with Mitt Romney trying to get a new job. And it's gotten a lot of attention around the country today after we put it out last night at the, at the event. And it was funny, and it was meant to be funny, and Cory is a friend, and we had a good time doing the video together. You all know Cory's a Democrat. And the reason why I bring that up to start off today is, it's kinda emblematic of the way I've been trying to govern in the state over the last two and a half years. Now, there are plenty of things that Cory and I disagree about from a policy perspective. And he'll stand up and fight for the things that he believes in, and you all know, I'll certainly stand up for the things that I believe in as well. But it doesn't mean that we can't work together. It doesn't mean that we can't find a way to do the job that you all sent us to do, which is to get things done. You know, we have too much in politics today of people who are posturing and preening and posing and sending out press releases. They think that's what their job is. All they have to do is look at Washington DC, right? I mean, they can't get a thing done down there. And everybody's at fault. Everybody's to blame. People have to reach across the aisle and start working with each other and finding common ground. And, you know, when I called Cory and asked him to do that video with me, he said yes right away. And that doesn't happen overnight between Republicans and Democrats. You have to build relationships. And it doesn't mean that you're gonna compromise your principles, because I won't and have not compromised my principles in the time I've been governor. But there is also, as I've said many times, a boulevard between compromising your principles and getting everything you want. You know, you all in New Jersey have decided to send me a divided government. Republican governor, Democratic state legislature. You're very funny. I really appreciate it. But that's what you decided to do. And so, I can't just sit back and say, "Well, I'm gonna sit in the corner here and hold my breath until you put people in charge of the legislature who I agree with." We'd get nowhere. We'd still be in the same shape we were in, you know, two and a half years ago. Hundred seventeen thousand lost jobs in the year before I became governor. Unemployment rate over 10%. Hundred fifteen tax and fee increases in the eight years before I became governor. The highest tax citizens in America, according to the Tax Foundation. You know, just a mess. Seventy billion dollars in wealth, having left the state in the four years before I became governor. Seventy billion in wealth left. That's what partisanship gets you. That's what being unwilling to compromise will get you, is people standing in the corner and staring at each other, or one party dominating and pursuing policies that were bad for our state. So, I'm not gonna make any apologies for working with Democrats. That's my job. I gotta work with people who I don't agree with on every issue, but it's my job to find the issues we do agree on and to force compromise where the people don't think compromise is possible. So how do we do that, right? What's the evidence that we've actually done it? Two budgets now, that we balanced with significant deficits going into them, without raising taxes on the people of the state of New Jersey for the first time in two and a half years. A cap on property taxes at 2%, a cap on interest arbitration awards at 2% that drove those salaries, and finally, reforming the pension and benefit system, so that we could make sure the pensions are there for our police officers, our firefighters, our teachers, our other public workers. But at the same time, not bankrupting our citizens in the process. And so, we passed historic reform. It's the biggest reform that's been passed in any state in the country, saving 132 billion dollars over the next 30 years, and making those pensions stable once again, so they'll be there for the people who have worked and earned and plan their retirements based on it. I didn't do that by myself. I did it with Democrats. With Democrats like Steve Sweeney and Sheila Oliver, Brian Stack, Sandy Cunningham. People in the Senate and the Assembly who were willing to put aside partisanship and say, "You know what? The governor's right on this, and we've gotta do it." That only happens because you're supporting me. I guarantee you that. Because you know, those guys down in Trenton, one of the things they're expert at is reading polls. They're reading polls all the time. Many of them read polls to figure out what they think. And a lot of them read polls to figure out how they're gonna act. And so, when you all say that you approve of the job I'm doing, when you say you support the policies that we're pursuing, that makes them sit up and take notice. It's one of the ways that you can help to make a difference. Showing up at events like today is one of the ways you make a difference. So that's why I'll continue to work with Democrats like them to make things happen for our state, and I'll compromise. I'll put out a plan, and I'll realize I'm not gonna get all of it, but my job is to get as much of it as I can and not compromise my principles in the process, and I won't do that. But you know, there are those in Trenton who have not yet gotten the memo, that are not part of the group who wants to make things happen. You know, they're the folks who wanna continue to run Trenton the way it's been running for the eight years before I got there. And those folks need to be spoken to directly. We got two in particular that really don't get it. Lou Greenwald and Paul Sarlow. Now, these are the guys who were the chairman of the Budget Committee last year in the Assembly and the Senate. Paul Sarlow's still there this year in the Senate. Lou Greenwald got a promotion to Majority Leader. And let me tell you what these guys did last year. Last year, they put 816 million dollars in additional spending into the budget, had no tax revenues to pay for it. Sent me the budget that way. Knowingly sent me the budget that way. They knew their numbers were fake, they knew they were phony, and they sent it to me anyway, purely for politics, because they thought no way the governor will use his line item veto pen to strike out spending, because it'll be too unpopular. And so, they were sending our state careening back towards the days of deficits where we were gonna have to lay people off, raise taxes in order to pay for their spending. Well, they mis-evaluated two very important things. One, they mis-evaluated me. And I took that pen out and I lied unvetoed out, just for good, good savings, 900 million. Not 816, 900 million out of the budget. And they mis-evaluated you. Because in the days after I did that to the budget, they yelled and screamed and called me all kinds of names. You all might remember it from last summer. There were words on the front page of the newspaper that I never thought I'd see in print in my entire life. I mean, people used to call me that stuff in private all the time, but they'd never put it in the newspaper before. And they tried to tell you that New Jersey was gonna be a disaster after these cuts were made, that our kids weren't gonna get an education, that hospitals would close, that poor people wouldn't be taken care of. You remember, they told you all that. They called me all kinds of names. They said I was cold, and I was heartless, and bloodless. But here's what the people in New Jersey knew. They saw this game before, and they've seen these actors before, and they know they're full of it. And what they saw was, on July 1st, when the new budget year started, the sun came up in the morning, and people went to work. In fact, more people going to work now, 70,000 more people going to work every day now than when I became governor, because we're pursuing fiscally responsible policies at the state level and not listening to these guys anymore. So now, why is that important? Because these same jokers are back. They're back now, and here's what they're gonna be telling you over the next couple of weeks. They're gonna say, "Trust us. Trust us on the numbers. Governor wants to cut your taxes." So does Senator Sweeney, by the way. "But they wanna cut your taxes, but their numbers aren't right. Our numbers are right." Coming from the same people who last year wanted to spend 816 million dollars of your money that we didn't have. And you know what they would've done? They would've just come back to you in the middle of the year and raised your taxes, because they've done it over and over and over again. So I want you to be careful. This is the crazy 47 days in Trenton. It's crazy. Forty-seven days, we've got 46 days left for them to act, and then the day after. And it's gonna be crazy, and they're gonna be telling you all kinds of stuff. So remember, when they tell you that stuff, these are the same people who were telling you a year ago, "Spend the extra 800 million. No problem." The same people who dug us in a hole for eight years, the same people who during that eight years, New Jersey had zero private sector job growth. In eight years, not one net new private sector job in New Jersey, because they made us the most expensive place in America to live and work, because of their policies. And those are the Democrats I refuse to work with, because those Democrats are the ones who are asking me to compromise my principle, and my principle is this: I will not ask you for another dollar in increased taxes until I can look you in the eye and say, "Government is spending every dollar you already spent efficiently." We're not, and until we fix that, we're not raising anybody's taxes in this state. By the way, just so you can get the scope of 115 tax and fee increases in eight years, because it's almost too big to really fathom, that's a tax or fee increase every 25 days for eight years. Every 25 days for eight years, those Democrats in Trenton raised a tax or a fee at the state level on you, took more money out of your pocket, took more money away from your family to spend on their favorite little project in Trenton. Let me give you a clue, everybody. The only way to make sure that we don't waste any more money in Trenton is to never send it to us in the first place. Those are the guys, they said, "We trust our numbers. We trust our numbers." They were only 800 million off last time. You know, 800 million here, 800 million there. Start talking about real money. These guys have gotten it wrong before, they're getting it wrong again. And you know why? It's not because they're dumb. It's worse. It's worse, because they're the same old politicians that have inhabited Trenton for a decade. They will do or say anything that they think will advance their political future. They forget that you sent us there to try to make your future better, not just to make our future better. And that's why they say these things. I would not be as upset about it if I could just write it off to them being stupid. Then you say, "Well, geez, there's nothing they can do about that." But not telling the truth to try to advance your own political agenda is much, much worse. Much worse. And so, we're gonna have a fight over the next 47 days. And as I said in the video, I don't go looking for fights, but I will fight the fights worth fighting. And here's the fight worth fighting in the next 46 days. People of New Jersey haven't had a tax cut in over a decade. You've made the sacrifices that are necessary to step up and help me balance this budget, and I wanna give you some of your money back to spend on your family, not to spend in Trenton. So that's gonna be the challenge, and get ready. It's gonna be entertaining. I can guarantee you, if you like the names I was called before, you can only imagine the ones I'm gonna be called in the next 46 days. But there also will be some good Democrats. Some good Democrats in the legislature will stand up and say, "You know what? We're putting party behind policy. We're putting politics aside to have progress for our state. Seventy thousand new private sector jobs since I've been governor. Unemployment rate down since I've been governor. The budget now balanced since I've been governor. We are proving that these policies work, and we're leading the country in doing it. We've made the tough decisions, and you all have supported me in making those tough decisions. You've shown politicians all over America that people in New Jersey are not only tough, but they're smart. They know we had a party for eight years that we couldn't pay for, that we didn't pay for, and that when that happens, the day of reckoning comes, and we've had that day of reckoning over the last two-plus years. And now, as things start to get better, and they are, as the New Jersey comeback is beginning, I am not gonna allow them to take the fruits of that comeback that you worked for and keep it for themselves. They gotta give some of it back to you, for your families, to save for college for your kids, to help to pay down some debt you may have had to run up during difficult times, to grow your business and hire some more people, to do whatever you think is best with the money you've earned, rather than just continuing each and every day, or at least every 25 days, to raise a tax or raise a fee in this state. So that's gonna be the fight over the next 46 days. And I'll find some good Democrats who'll work with me, and I'm convinced that we'll get a tax cut passed between now and June 30th, and you'll start to see tax relief for the first time in a long time. And remember this: our property tax cap is beginning to work. Last year, property taxes increased less than any year in the last 20 years in New Jersey, and we're gonna continue that spiral going down, because we're working together, and we're making tough choices together, and we're holding government accountable together, because it's our money the government gets to spend. It's not anybody else's money. It's our money. So, enough speeching from me. Here's what we're gonna do. We now get to the fun part of the program. And the fun part of the program is when you get to ask me questions, and I get to answer them. So, there are four rules. Four rules in the Chris Christie Town Hall meetings. Let us review them quickly. Rule number one is, raise your hand, and I will call on you. Do not yell out questions. I will not answer the yelled-out questions. Rule number two is, when I call on you, please wait till the microphone gets to you, so that I can hear your question, and everybody else in this big room can hear your question as well. And please give me your name and where you're from, so I don't have to say, "Hey, you in the red tie," but I can actually use your name. Now, the rules get a little more difficult as we go along, so hang with me. Rule number three: when you get this microphone in your hand, you are gonna feel an indescribable, but undeniable pull to make a speech. Take my word for it. And see, so when this happens, I'll let you do some speaking, but if you start to go on for too long, I'm gonna interrupt you. And it's not because I'm rude, and it's not because I don't wanna listen to you. It's because there's lots of people here, and I'd like to get to as many questions as I possibly can. And so, I might just say, "Okay, I get it. What's your question?" And the fourth and final rule is this: now, some of you have been to town hall meetings before. I see you out here. You are the people that we kindly recall the repeat offenders. You are back. So hang with me on this rule. For those of you who are new, you may not have been to a town hall meeting before, you may have seen excerpts on the news or over the internet of some of my more interesting interactions with my constituents. Don't be afraid. Here's the deal, it works pretty simple. There may be people in this room today, I'm sure there are, who disagree with me on one or more things. And that's okay. That's what our country's all about. And if I call on you, and you wanna disagree, that's fine. And if you do so in a reasonable and respectful way, you will get a reasonable and respectful disagreement in return. However, if today is the day that you decide you wanna take the governor of New Jersey out for a walk, if today is the day that you decide, because all these cameras are here, that you wanna show off for your friends at home by beating me around a little bit, let me make you understand something real clearly. For purposes of today's town hall meeting, we are all from New Jersey. All right? And what that means is really simple. If you give it, you're getting it back. So, let's all get going. Who's got questions? Raise your hand. Let's go to the good part.
Hi. Hi, Governor. My name is Josh Kalesh. I'm from Jefferson Township. How are you? Um, it's not really, a quick question. Um, I have a company in New Jersey, um, small business, and I've been working with the school districts. And we've been, uh, last, over the last seven years, we saved the school districts probably over a million dollars. And, uh, the name of the company is Booker Distribution. And we've been trying to get the message to you through a few other people. So I have a chance to just introduce myself, and I just wanted to tell you about my company. We're trying to work with all the other school districts in New Jersey, okay? And the problem is trying to get the message out. And we wanna work with you, to be honest with you, and get that message out.
I think you just did.
Okay.
Uh, here's what I'd like you to do.
Okay.
Give your card to one of the guys who just handed you the microphone.
Okay.
All right? And we'll have our folks in the governor's office reach out to you, talk to you, and see if there's any way that we can be helpful.
Thank you very much for your time.
You're very welcome. Yes, ma'am, in the pinkish shirt right there. Nope, 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 not you. That's not pink, is it? Am I going colorblind? No, there you go. You. Sure. You use the microphone, okay?
Okay. Hi, I, uh, hope you remember me. I'm a good friend, well, cousin, Lisa Rose, or something. Hi. Anyway, Governor, I don't agree with everything. I'm here, though, to congratulate you on the work you're doing with Drug Courts, um, making it mandatory for nonviolent offenders. We all work in the prevention field in Morris County. I've known you since you were a freeholder. Thank you for that. Question, quickly. Are you in support of permanent medication, prescription med drop boxes in the county, the way the Attorney General's Office has been? Because we are trying to promote them in Morris County. I hope you know, um, the DEA Partnership for Drug Free New Jersey has worked to have annual take-back times for prescription meds. We want one in just about every town in Morris County. Sheriff Rochford is working with us. Wanted to know your idea. Do you know about them?
I don't, but, uh...
I have information for you if I can leave it.
Give it to my staff.
If I can leave it, great. I'd love for you to be a part of it, and I...
Well, listen, I, I, I wanna be part of anything we can do to lessen the amount of drug abuse that we have in our society, because it's destructive. It's destructive, and it can be fixed. Um, it can, people can be treated. And, you know, I put forward a proposal this year for all nonviolent drug offenders, not distributors, not people who are selling, but people who are using, who are arrested with small amounts on them, that if those folks are addicted, and most of them are, that they should be sent in a mandatory way to drug treatment. Because I've seen drug treatment work. Um, I've seen it work in my life and my family. I've seen it with friends. I've seen it as a member of the board at DeTao Village out in Mendham. It works. And, you know, the war on drugs was well-intentioned when it started, threw a lot of people in jail over time. But the problem is that we keep people in jail, drugs get smuggled into jail, despite the best efforts of law enforcement, they get smuggled into jail, people remain drug addicted, they come out of jail drug addicted, and then we wonder why they're back in jail after having committed crimes to support their addiction. This is a disease, and we need to treat it as a disease. And so, even if on a moral level, you don't agree with that, on an economic level, you should agree with it. It costs us $49,000 a year to warehouse an inmate in a state prison. It costs us $24,000 a year for a year-long of drug addiction treatment. In warehousing somebody, we have next to no chance of them becoming clean. In putting them in drug treatment for a year in a secure facility, they gotta stay, they gotta do it, or they go to jail, um, then we have a chance for that person to become a productive member of our society, to come out and be employed, to be a better husband or wife, a better father or son, a better mother or daughter, and to contribute to the fabric of our society rather than tearing it apart, which is what drug addiction does to our society. So you know, some people don't think it should be mandatory. I think it has to be. I have very rarely met the person who admits that they're ready for drug treatment. Almost every person I've ever met always says that, you know, they're in denial. You know, you show them a drug test, it's a bad test. You know, I mean, we've all been through this in our lives, with family members, with friends. It is an insidious disease, and we need to start treating it like one. So, I don't know about that specific program. I'll take a look at it. If it's consistent with those goals, I'm sure I'll be able to support it, and I thank all of you who are here, who are part of that fight. For a long time, it hasn't gotten the attention it deserves. It's gonna get the attention it deserves now, because I'm behind it. So thank you all very much. Yes, ma'am, right there. Yep. He's coming around this way.
Thank you, Governor Christie, for the opportunity to be here today, and for you to share statewide these opportunities for the residents of New Jersey. Uh, my name is Valerie Tischlich, and I'm with Poor Sisters Winery in Warren County. Well, I'd like to, um, let you know that our industry, the wine industry, is the fastest-growing industry in New Jersey agriculture, and I'm here to say thank you to you and your staff for supporting this industry.
You're very welcome. There was a lot of discussion and controversy, as you know, in the last year or so about how best to support the industry. I think we found the way to do it, and I think we're gonna continue to work very hard with all of you through the Department of Agriculture to make sure that it is a supported industry. It's, um, it's an industry that not only helps us in a bunch of different ways from a taxation perspective, but also in terms of tourism and economic development. People come and enjoy what wineries in New Jersey... And, um, as a small business person, I commend you for what you're doing. Um, it's not the easiest time in the world to be a small business person in this economy. And the fact that you're still grinding away at it and making it work, anything we could do to help, we're gonna try to do that. Because as the better times come, uh, we're gonna wanna share in your success as well. So thank you very much. Yes, sir. Striped shirt, striped golf shirt.
Thank you, Governor Christie. My name is Peter Glenn. I live in Jefferson Township. And the question that I have involves the sustainability bill that was just recently put on your desk. I don't know if you signed it yet. But I'd like to request that you don't, because that's related to UN Agenda 21. Which is a program that the UN is trying to implement throughout the world. Where they would move all the people into cities and make the rest of the countryside in between the cities totally back to nature and nothing else. You would not be allowed to own a car. You would not be able to own a house or anything like that. And I'm just trying to warn the public that this is coming. As part of the whole agenda, the one world government agenda that they're trying to go for. And New Jersey, I know, has passed some bills already related to sustainability. I ask that, I caution you that you be careful what is passed. That we don't wind up with a situation like that. Where people can't even own their own homes, where their homes are taken away from them. Where their automobiles are taken away from them. That's a very important issue and I think more people needs, need to know about it.
Well, I thank you for bringing the issue up. You can count on the fact that I'm gonna keep an eye on that. And we're, listen, this administration is concerned about trying to make sure that we have the appropriate balance between protecting our environment, protecting people's property rights, and allowing for continued economic growth in our state. So we continue to create new jobs and new opportunities so people are gonna want to continue to live here and others are gonna want to move here. And, you know, you'll get people on, on both sides of that argument who are absolutists who say, you know, if you're not 100% with me, you're against me. Um, I think it's my responsibility to find the balance between those. We all want a safe environment. We want safe drinking water. We want clean air to breathe. We want to make sure that our, that our land and our soil, that we grow so much of our food is, is appropriate for that to be done. And there's nobody in this administration who believes that that should be anything different than that. But we also know that we have to permit for people to live their lives in this state. And we have to permit for the appropriate amount of economic growth to continue to occur. And so through the appointments that we've made and the things that we're trying to do with a number of policies, I think that at times have gone overboard in that regard. Um, we're trying to bring them back into common sense. But, you know, we'll always have fights about it. There'll always be battles about it, but, um, uh, I'm, I'm up for it. Because I know that what I'm trying to do, I have four children who I want to live in this state for their adult lives too. And so I want a clean and safe state for them to live in. But I also want a state where they have economic opportunity. Where they could raise a family and develop a career, buy a home of their own. And to be able to enjoy those things that come with success in our country. And so we gotta find that balance. That's the balance I'm trying to strike. We're trying to be reasonable about it. Um, but we will not bend over either way, uh, backwards to try to make sure that we, uh, get favor from the extremes. Because I'm not interested in that on either side. Okay? For the people out in the sun, you gotta get one, right? There's a guy with sunglasses on, a green shirt, standing in the sun. So he's gotta get a question. Right behind you.
Thank you, Governor. My name is Peter Gethens. I live in Whippany.
Where do you live?
Whippany. I own a small landscaping, uh, business. And my question to you is approximately five or six years ago, the state came out with a program for, to be a licensed home improvement contractor. And I would say 30 or 40% of the people doing landscaping, masonry, carpentry, sheetrock, et cetera, et cetera, are not licensed. And nobody seems to be doing anything about it. And what's happening is it's, it's destroying our business because nobody has insurance, nobody has licenses. And it's not only the illegals, it's firemen doing it on the side, cops, DPW workers, people on unemployment. It's a real epidemic. And looking at the, the rules, the first offense is $5,000 if you're caught without the license. Actually, it's 5,000 if you don't have it posted on your truck or on your letterhead or on a job sign. So I just ran some quick numbers. If we were to hire two officers per county, that would put 42 people to work, one fine a day, per officer would be 21,000 a day, 105,000 a week, et cetera, et cetera. We could pay the people a low salary and give them a commission on the fine. More fines, more money for the individual. They could easily just go to Home Depot, Lowe's, every mason supply yard, hardware, landscape nursery and get these guys. It would be millions and millions and millions of dollars for the state immediately. And get these clowns out of destroying what we, I've been in business for 24 years and this is the worst it has ever been. And it's not only the economy that stinks. It's all these guys that don't have the proper licensing, insurance, education, et cetera, et cetera.
Alright.
And it's, uh, it's not an even playing field.
Well, listen, once the state made the determination that they were gonna license these folks, then we also have the responsibility to enforce the need for licensure on it. And so we have a new, uh, director of the Division of Consumer Affairs, kind of Eric Kenevsky, who worked with me in the US Attorney's Office. It's a former federal prosecutor, so I don't think he has, um, you know, any reluctance to go after people and enforce the law. So give me something to talk to Eric about. Um, and if you give your information, um, to our folks, um, I'd like to have someone from Eric's office get back to you. Yeah, but you never drove down there after the governor told them they had to meet with you. I got a feeling it's gonna be a whole nother deal, man. For temporarily, at least I have some sway down there. Uh. Alright, now, one of the things I said in the video jokingly yesterday was, I said, one of the things that I couldn't stand anymore was all these questions from kids that I'm getting lately. I was only joking. Um, and I see a young man who's raising his hand back there, a few rows back. Blonde hair. Yes, sir?
I'm Dominic Manetti. And.
Where you from, Dominic?
New Jersey.
Me, me too, Dominic. Alright. What do you got for me, buddy?
East Hannover.
Excellent.
Um, have you ever shared your ideas with the, um, president?
Have I ever shared my ideas with the president? Yes, I have. Both personally and over the airwaves. Um, yeah, now, listen, I, I have a very good relationship with the president and, um, both Mary Pat and I have a great relationship with the president and with Mrs. Obama. Um, and now, listen, there's much, much more I disagree with the president about than I agree with him about. And I, I certainly don't intend to be voting for him. Um, and didn't vote for him last time, but. But what I will say to you is this, and this is part of what I was saying in the beginning. He's the President of the United States. We have one at a time. And so he gets my respect because he holds that office. And so, yeah, when I've had things that I wanted to tell him, I had the opportunity to tell him, I have. Uh, he came here right after Hurricane Irene and we spent most of an entire day together, traveling around the state, looking at different areas of the state that had flooded because of the hurricane. So we had a lot of time in the car together to talk about a lot of different things and we did. Uh, and I've been down to the White House a number of times and had the opportunity to speak to him as well. And so, yeah, I've definitely shared my ideas with the president. Every once in a while, I'll give a speech where I share some of my ideas in the speech and wonder if he might be listening or not. Um, but I do and, and we should share those ideas with each other. And we should do it in a way that's constructive. Now, you know, it doesn't mean we won't have really harsh disagreements and we will. And it doesn't mean we shouldn't fight with each other in public because we should. You should hear that. You should hear that dialogue of ideas. But if that arguing in public prevents us ultimately from getting something done, then the arguing is not the right thing to do. You have to be willing to argue passionately for your position and find a way to fix the problem. And so anytime I have something I want to share with the president and I think it's appropriate, um, I do. And he has always listened. And so hasn't done what I've asked him to do, but he's always listened. And that's important. And that's all you can really ask for with two people who disagree with each other fundamentally on the role of government in our society. So I have and I'll continue to with whoever the next president of the United States is, whether it's President Obama or whether it's President Romney. I'll share my ideas with either one of them. So thank you for coming today and thanks for asking your questions. See, these folks come in here and when they get seated here, they think, wow, we got the greatest seats, right? And then I always have my back to them and I forget to turn around and see if they have questions. So I'm gonna try to not to do that. So yes, sir, right here. Go ahead, Joe. You do it.
My name is Mark Maestro. Um, from Lodi, New Jersey. Served in Vietnam on a riverboat. Was in way during the Tet Offensive 1968. Lost three of my shipmates in that war. So I know what war is. And when we came home, we weren't welcomed. And the people that welcomed us that way went to the colleges and universities and they changed the mandate. They took the greatness of America's freedom and they changed it to liberalism and progressivism and now it's going into socialism. And I'm gonna ask you if you can change the mandate back to being good American citizens? Can we put that back in our schools? Can we list what makes a good American, our, our American core values? God, country, duty, honor, integrity, faith, hope, charity, personal responsibility, honesty? Can we put that back in our schools and can you change the mandate back?
First of all, thank you for your service. And for every time that wasn't said when you come home, we should say it twice to make up for the mistakes that our country made when you did come home after serving honorably and bravely in, in, in a conflict that you did. And what you said is exactly what I'm trying to do. You know, those are the arguments we're having now. And when I said before that we should have these arguments out loud, we should have those arguments out loud. And, and it should be more than just words, it should be deeds that back up those words. You know, folks who say things like honor and duty and country and personal responsibility and accountability. We don't nearly need to say them, we need to act on them. And so, yeah, I've been trying to do that and I'm gonna continue to speak out on those things. And at times, as you know, they're not popular. Because lots of people just want to live and let live. You know, and in some instances, that may be okay. But we have to have standards. We have to have standards of accountability for everyone in this society because so much is given to us by being born Americans. And, and, and I try to emphasize this to my children all the time. That how lucky they are to have been born in this country. And to have the opportunities that they have. And that with that comes a responsibility and an accountability for your own conduct and for what else you contribute to someone other than your own self-interest. And I think all too often in society, and this is almost without regard to political philosophy in some instances, everyone's worried about their own self-interest first. And what happens is we wind up losing our sense of community. You know, when you served, the sense of community, I suspect that you felt with the men you served with. Right? It's something that still lives with you today. And it is a binding and uplifting feeling for every person who has that inside them. And I absolutely believe that that's why we should be talking about these things in our schools. That values do matter. And we should be talking about those things. Not to dictate values to people, but to expose children to those values and letting them understand why they're important and they'll make their own decision. We all know anytime we try to tell our kids anything, they gotta learn it. You know, if we try to tell them, we're, definition, we're wrong. Right?
God chooses the color of our skin and God chooses if we're a man or a woman and God chooses our parents and our brothers and our sisters and God chooses the nation we are born in. We should be celebrating that gift.
Absolutely. Yep. You're absolutely right. And I think. The only way for us to, to, to make that happen again for our country is to force it into the dialogue. And our leaders have to force it into the dialogue by talking about it and being unafraid of those who will say that they're trying to either pander to one group or another or that they're trying to dictate certain of their own values be someone else's. That's not what you're trying to do. What you're trying to do is to expose people to the virtue that comes with those values and let them make their own decision. And I probably have the same level of confidence that you do. That if young people in America are exposed to the virtue of those values, they'll choose those values. Because that's what this country's always stood for. Thank you for raising that. Yes, ma'am, in the back. Yep. You're standing up.
Thank you, Governor Christie. First, I want to thank you for vetoing the.
Just put it a little closer to your mouth.
Vetoing the health care exchange. I really appreciate that. And secondly, uh, I was wondering if you could make a comment on the following. Two Sundays ago, I was listening to the Bob Grant Show on WABC. And there may be credence to this, I don't know. He said something about the general election in November. And I never heard of this, even for the Obama administration, that the votes would be counted in Spain by a Spanish company. Uh, I.
I never heard that. I mean, listen.
Well.
I know, let's, let's say this. I know, I can tell you the way the votes are gonna be counted in New Jersey.
Good. Where's that? Here?
The way the votes are counted in New Jersey is municipality by municipality, county by county to the state. And so what will happen? What town do you live in?
Caldwell. I saw you in Caldwell, too.
So in Caldwell, so what's gonna happen is you're gonna go to vote where you normally vote, Caldwell. There'll be election workers there that are hired that day to work the machines and work the books and make sure that there's integrity in the election process. At the end of the night, I think given the machines you have, they're gonna hit a button, the tape is gonna come out on who voted for who, how many voted for each one of the candidates up and down on the ballot. They're gonna get on the phone, they're gonna call municipal town hall and they're gonna tell them what the numbers were. The town hall people are gonna call Newark, in your instance, to the county board of elections and report to them on what the tallies were from there and then bring those votes to the, uh, to the county organization. And then the counties are all gonna get those up to the state and we'll report our results. And there will be the press involved in all this, by the way. Um, they're gonna be at every county seat and they're gonna be, um, where all the votes are being tabulated and distributed. And so, you know, I, I didn't hear what was talked about and sometimes, you know, some of that stuff, uh, people talk about conspiracy theories on things that they may have heard someplace. The internet is a great proprietor now of conspiracy theories without basis. You gotta be really careful about what you hear and what you read. But I can't tell you what every state's gonna do, but I can tell you what we're gonna do. And there won't be any votes from New Jersey counted in Spain. The votes in New Jersey
Okay.
Are counted right here in New Jersey, will be counted fairly and completely because we have great people in every county who are appointed by the governor to be able to make sure that those are put in place in fact. One of our board election members is right here, Mr. Seti from the county board of elections is here. And he'll make sure guarantee you, Seti's gonna make sure the votes are counted the right way. And on the health exchange bill, be really clear about it. I'm not spending another nickel of money on Obamacare until the Supreme Court tells me it's constitutional.
Thank you so much, Governor Christie. We hear, I'm sorry, my name is Hank Heller and I live in Parsippany, New Jersey. Thank you, sir. We hear lots of dialogue about Abbott districts, about the appropriateness of it, the inappropriateness of it and why Abbott districts cost local Morris County school districts money that they can't afford to give up. I frankly do not know that it's the correct thing to take that money or not to, I'm not an attorney nor a politician. But what I do, I would like to put forth is, what is the possibility of forming regional or county boards of education and school administrations instead of the current way of using local politics to keep boards of ed and education administrators in each town and hamlet? I think if there's about 605 throughout our state. It seems to me we could have better, stronger and much less expensive education in New Jersey and not have to find ways of trying to take money from those that can't afford it. If we took the B O E and the local administrators out of the puzzle and out of non-professional hands, I think that the savings and nepotism alone might be able to fund all of the difficulties that you might come across in any of your budgets, sir. Thank you.
Listen, you put your finger on one of the key arguments that this state has been having for decades. And when you boil it all down, it is the argument of centralization or regionalization versus home rule. This applies not only to boards of education, I think we're at 588 now, even though we have 566 municipalities, the 588 school districts. And it's about the municipalities also. I mean, we have 566 municipalities in a state this size, that's a significant number. And so, there's this regular argument that goes on. Look at places like Pennsylvania and others that are much more consolidated in terms of their municipal governance and in terms of their school governance. There are many people in the state who feel and will argue passionately that they don't want their child's education taken any further away from them than their local municipality. There are others like you who are gonna argue that the cost of that and the relative effectiveness of it from an educational perspective are, you know, don't merit what we're doing. I can tell you that I'm chipping away at this. You know, we're trying to figure out ways to get people to talk about this. One of the ways we're doing it, thanks, is through the property tax cap. What that cap, because now there are just very few exceptions to it, three exceptions to it, debt service, pension costs and healthcare costs, two of which we've reformed. We're forcing municipalities and school boards to make hard decisions now. I think what you're gonna see first, before you see a consolidation of entities, whether they be school boards or municipalities, is you're gonna start to see a lot more in shared services. And I think you're gonna see another piece of legislation probably coming in the next 46 days that's gonna say that the people in New Jersey don't wanna pay any longer if you can share services and you don't, we don't wanna subsidize the cost of your decision not to share services. And so, if, you know, we have a study that shows you could save money by sharing services and you don't, then we're gonna reduce your state aid by that much. Because the taxpayers of all the states shouldn't have to subsidize an individual municipality's decision not to consolidate and save money. Now, we've tried, that's the stick approach, because for 30 years, we've been trying the carrot approach and we haven't made the carrot big enough, apparently, for anybody to go and try to take a bite out of it. So, now, we have to try the other side. That's another area where myself and the Senate President are working together on that bill to try to put some teeth into it. Because what I'm trying to do is force local governing bodies to decide how much they really love home rule. How much are they really willing to pay for it? And that's why with the property tax cap, we tell people, you wanna go over the 2% cap, fine, but put it to a vote. And you have very few municipalities who are putting this to a vote. And that's because they know they'd lose, because the taxpayers have had enough. And they want government to start solving these problems. So, my answer to you is, it's not gonna happen overnight because it's so embedded in the culture of this state that if I came out with a bill tomorrow to say, if you have a certain number of residents, you have to consolidate with your neighbor to the east or to the west or the north or the south, there would be mayhem in this state. And I'm causing enough of that to begin with, I don't wanna add on to it. But what we are doing through these other tools is forcing local officials to make these decisions. And to explain and rationalize to their voters, if they're not making those decisions, why not? And if it's gonna cost them more, the voters have to authorize it. So, it's kinda like we're closing the walls and they're not completely closed yet and, you know, now we have some municipalities who are trying to get around the cap by having all kinds of new fees, types of user fees. We're gonna end that in the next 46 days. Senate President and I agree on that as well. You wanna charge a trash collection user fee? Fine, but it has to fit under the cap. You wanna charge a fee for your municipal pool? That's okay, fit it under the cap. You can call it whatever the hell you want, but costs to the taxpayer are not going up more than 2%. That's it. They're not going up more than that. I didn't fight as hard as I fought to get pension and benefit reform and literally save billions of dollars that are gonna come off your property tax bill to have some local officials spend it out the side door. So, you know, I'm not gonna take the heat for this after taking all the heat I took with the thousands of people marching on Trenton on pension and benefit reform to let people give it away with user fees out the side door. So, we're trying to close the escape routes and we're trying to close in the walls to make sure that they have to be held accountable for what they're gonna do. And if you believe, as you do, and others if you do, then you need to be speaking out. Princeton Borough and Princeton Township just decided to consolidate. A lot of people told me that failed, I think, at least three times before it finally passed. A lot of people said that would never happen, it's happened. I think people are becoming aware of the fact that this is costing us too much money and for a lot of people, it's driving people out of the state, especially people on fixed incomes, you know, who just can't afford to have property taxes increasing at that level any longer. So, that's what we're trying to do, but it'll be a step-by-step process, not one tearing off of the Band-Aid, unfortunately.
Hi.
Oh, it's good, go ahead.
Hi.
Go ahead, right up to you.
Okay. You hear me? Okay. Hi, I'm Sarah Bringin, I go to St. Rose, right across the street, and I'm from East Hanover, New Jersey. I, one of my relatives just lost her job and now when I go in the news, like, we're talking about, like, what I think is stupid stuff, like, especially with the president. And I really get annoyed because they don't keep a fact on people who are losing their jobs and not being able to support their family. And I feel like that, a lot of put this, but I feel like that is not important anymore, that people don't, people spend their time talking about something dumb and don't put any, don't put anything to their minds that's important. I feel like we're just talking about stuff that's small. We're not talking about the really big things, because I think we're trying to avoid it.
How old are you?
I'm 12.
12? Want a job?
Yeah.
Listen, you know, I couldn't have said it any better, right? I mean, you're so right, that in Washington DC, what's going on right now is they're arguing about all kinds of things that have little or nothing to do with your relative finding a new job, with some of the thousands of people who are still unemployed in New Jersey finding work so they can support their families. And you're having the same feeling I'm having, listening to some of this stuff. Wait till you get as old as I am, you're really gonna be tired of listening to it. You know, it is disgraceful that our national government is playing the politics that it's playing and not attending and talking about the fact that you have millions of Americans who wanna work who can't find a job. And as a result, they're losing their homes, tough to put food on the table for their families, tough to take care of their children in the way that they need to be taken care of. And we should be spending most, if not all, of our time talking about how to revive the American economy so that we can put people back to work. And so, what I wanna tell you is that you're smart because you're listening, first off, and at 12 years old, you're interested enough to actually listen to this, which is really encouraging to me, that we have people like you who at your age are really listening. And then, even more important, understanding it, understanding the import of it and questioning it third. You know, for us to be really good at anything, we have to listen, we have to understand, and then we have to challenge or question the information we get, as all of us, no matter what role we play in life. And so, I can't give you an answer as to whether they're gonna get their act together in Washington or not. And I feel exactly the same way you do, that it's really discouraging and that they're talking about small things instead of the really big problems we all know are there that need to get fixed, but they're scared. They're scared to tell you and these other people the truth about how to fix these problems because they're afraid you'll get angry. And I'm more afraid of what's gonna happen to those people who don't have a job if we don't start to fix these problems soon. So, thanks for raising that issue, that was really great, really great. Yes, ma'am, on the aisle, red shirt.
Thank you so much, Governor. My name is Betty Norwick and I'm from Denville. And I just had to hear it directly from you and not the media, will you ever consider running for president of this great country? I feel like you're our only hope.
Oh, Betty, Betty, Betty. Listen, not this time, obviously, and, you know, who knows? Listen, I gotta be really honest with you, Betty. The fact that folks like you come out to meetings like this and ask me that question is really overwhelming to me. And I've heard it a bunch of times, but, you know, think about it, I'm, you know, a guy who was born in Newark and raised in Livingston and from, you know, a father who worked at the Breyer's Ice Cream Plant to put himself through college at night at Rutgers in Newark and a mom who never went to college. And, you know, the fact that some people think that I should think about running for president of the United States is just overwhelming. So, here's what I'll say, I never thought I was gonna be governor. And so, you never know where life's gonna bring you and what opportunities are gonna be presented to you. And so, I certainly won't say yes today, I'm definitely going to, because who knows? But I'm not gonna say no either, because all I know is that I'll try to make the best decisions I can when opportunities or challenges present themselves to me. I can remember, since I mentioned Frank before, I was a freeholder here from 1995 to 1997 for three years. And I got defeated in a Republican primary for renomination in 1997. And so, at the end of that time in December of 1997, I was packing up to leave my office. And Frank and I always hadn't agreed on everything. We ran against each other the first time in 1994 and we came to know and understand each other a lot better during those three years and in the years since then. But I'll tell you two things that make me never wanna guess about where my life is gonna head. The first one was Frank came up to me as I was getting ready to leave the office and he said to me, don't be discouraged, you're meant for bigger things. And I, believe me, at the time, I really thought he was just trying to be nice, because I was 34 years old and, you know, out of elective office after I'd been there for just three years. But I came to realize years later that that's what he really thought and he turned out to be right. The other thing is that I read in the newspaper as I was leaving, the lead of the story that they wrote about me leaving was, "In the end to a once seemingly promising political career." This was December of 1997. And, you know, they turned out to be wrong, too. So, all I know is, I'm gonna try to do the best job I can with the job I have, I'm gonna try to keep my eye off of whatever the next job may be, because I've done that before in my life and it doesn't serve you. What serves you well is to keep your head down, do the job you're doing as well as you possibly can, and if you do it well enough, there will be people like you who will come and ask me to do something else. And if that's what it turns out to be sometime in the future, then I would be thrilled beyond belief. But, you know, there's a lot of years that goes between now and whenever that opportunity might present itself again. And in the meantime, I wanna try to do this job that you gave me the best way I can. If I do, I think you'll be all right.
I actually didn't have a question until I got here. My name is Stacy, I'm from Jefferson Township, apparently there's a lot of us Jefferson Township people here. There were, somebody was handing out these flyers about the redevelopment plan and the pass the foreclosure act, and I am sad to say that I have no idea what they're talking about, so
Would you repeat it to me, because that truck went by and I didn't hear what you said?
Okay, they handed out this paper with information about the redevelopment, which they spelt that wrong, but redevelopment act and the foreclosure act. And I have no idea what they're talking about, so I didn't know if
Yeah, why?
They're saying that you're gonna pass something that
Why don't you hand it up so I can see what the heck they're talking about? I'm a little nervous because they spell redevelopment wrong, so. All right.
Can't see him.
The redevelopment plan and pass the foreclosure act. Well, I don't know if we're passing the foreclosure act. That hasn't been sent to my desk yet and I don't know a whole heck of a lot about it. Redevelopment plan. Yeah, we have a redevelopment plan that is under consideration. I don't agree with what they say here is 1, 2, 3 and 4 of what'll happen if we do. The Lieutenant Governor's holding hearings all across the state about the proposed redevelopment plan, so we're still in the process of considering it and gathering input from the public on it. State needs to have a redevelopment plan, it's one of the things that's required by the law, you can give it back to her. And we're taking input from all over the state. The Lieutenant Governor's gonna have more hearings around the state for people to give their input about it. And then she's gonna bring all that input back and we're gonna talk about it and see what we wanna do to change what's on the books already or what she may have proposed through her group. On the foreclosure act, I know there's bills, you know, around the legislature now regarding that, but none that's made it to my desk yet. So, what I generally do about those is, I hear all kinds of legislators talking about bills that are gonna get to my desk and probably about 75% of them never get there. So, I don't worry about it till they get there. And then when they get there, I got 45 days to figure out what to do. So, I'll keep an eye on that, though, and I'll ask my staff about it, but I haven't heard anything directly about it before. So, we'll keep our eye on it, though. And the redevelopment stuff, if you have opinions on that, go to our website, nj.gov/governor, and there'll be, you'll see on the website when the Lieutenant Governor's gonna have more hearings than where they are. If you're interested in going and pitching in your opinion, please feel free to do it, that's what we're having them for.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for coming from Jefferson. Yes, ma'am, with sunglasses, yellow shirt.
Okay. Thank you for taking me. I think you're doing a wonderful job. I knew you would, right in the beginning. And if the healthcare mandate goes down, and I hope it does, because we're in to lose our federal republic. If the government, the big government can force us to do that, they can force us to buy anything. What do you think New Jersey might consider if it goes down? Purchasing private healthcare across state borders, exclusion of pre-existing conditions, insured cannot be dropped when they get sick, portable insurance, tort reform, price transparency?
Well, I think we would consider all of those options. I've talked already about buying insurance across state lines and we'll try all those options once we know what the playing field's gonna be. And consider all of them and discuss all of them. I think the one we're gonna have problems with in your list is tort reform, because I favor it, but we have a chairman of the Senate Judiciary Committee named Nick Scutari, who's a plaintiff's lawyer. And I think the likelihood of getting tort reform from a plaintiff's lawyer is slim and none, and Slim just left town. So, I think in your list, all the other things I think could be actively discussed and considered with the legislature. I agree with you, I think the mandate is wrong, I think it's unconstitutional, I don't think the government should be able to tell you what you have to buy. And it sounds to me, at least from the oral arguments, that there's a number of Supreme Court justices up there that are skeptical about that exercise of federal power also. I think what you're gonna see if it gets voted down is you're gonna see what should've been done in the first place, which for this problem to be dealt with, with greater input from the states, because one federal solution's not gonna fix this problem. You know, the challenges we face here in New Jersey, I suspect, are significantly more, significantly different from the challenges my friend, Governor Matt Mead, faces in Wyoming. Different intensity of population, different density of population, different types of exposures to things in the environment that cause disease, all these different things. You know, the idea that the same health plan that you have in New Jersey can work just as well in Wyoming doesn't seem to make sense to me. And I think that's why we were put together as a group of states. And, you know, we didn't sign away our sovereignty as states completely to the federal government, nor should we, but if this is upheld, I think, you know, we're on that slippery slope down towards that. So, I agree with you and we're gonna have to take time to figure it out if, whatever happens at the end of June of this year. But believe me, there's lots of good people in my staff and in the National Governors' Association across the country working on this issue. If it turns out to be overturned, they're gonna have a lot of ideas for us to consider as governors, Republicans and Democrats, because we're all gonna have to deal with this problem. So, thank you for your question.
Council?
Someone turn their mic on? Go ahead, try it again.
Okay. Natalina Ott from East Hanover. I work with the New Jersey Family Policy Council, I'm the Youth Impact Director, and we were getting into schools and doing presentations on sexual abstinence, because there's sexual diseases that are an epidemic, a silent epidemic. there's sexual diseases that are an epidemic, a silent epidemic, across America. But since Corzine sent back our tax dollars for absence education, I've found it very hard now to get into the schools. Even the Catholic schools are just turning you away. But I didn't know if you could help out, or just even, like, a letter of recommendation that I could send out to them to let them know that this is state law, to stress abstinence in the schools. Because one, you know, one place in Trenton said, "We kinda just ignore that, because we don't like that bill." But it is...
Boy, if I could do that. Just ignore the laws I really don't like. Listen, I work the Family Planning Council all the time. You have your folks send down to me what they might want me to consider in terms of saying or doing publicly. I think the kids have to get a full range of education on this stuff. They're not. To the extent that they're not, and the law's not being complied with, we need to make sure the law's complied with. And so, you know, send the information to me.
There's also a teen pep, which is in over 50 school districts already in New Jersey. It encourages 15-year-olds to engage in all kinds of sexual activity, which is a very dangerous, high-risk activity. And it's even, you know, it doesn't let the parents know about what's going on in their fifth-period class until, like, it's almost over. And then the parents come in, and it's almost bullying the parents and making them feel, you know, they need to compromise with their kids. And they don't even know about it.
Well, you're bringing me all new information that I did not know. So get me, get the folks, you or someone else from Family Planning Council, to get that stuff down to my office. They'll give you the contact information as to how to get it to me, and I'll take a look at it. If the laws aren't being enforced in this state as they should, that's my job to make sure they are, and we'll work with you to make sure that they are. So thank you for raising it. All right, now, I am, I'm at the moment where my staff is telling me that I can have one more question. Now, what this means is, I see all, like, at least 15 or 20 of you with your hands up, and you think all the pressure's on me, because I only get to pick one of you? But let me just remind you that the pressure's on you as well. Because if you ask a bad question, this crowd will turn on you, I guarantee you. They will boo you and groan and say, "Oh, you wasted the last question on that, I can't believe it." So I want you to think about that before you put your hands up. I wanna go back here to these folks, because they have only gotten a few, you guys have gotten most of them. So let's go to you, sir, right here.
Hi, Louis Lages from Florham Park. I accept that challenge, and I'm gonna piggyback off that very impressive young lady's question. You alluded to some of the problems facing New Jersey, $70 billion of wealth, high corporate tax rates driving businesses out. I really wanna expand on her point. Those are just some of the problems facing businesses in the state of New Jersey. Our healthcare costs are too high, property taxes are too high, infrastructure costs are too high, the cost to drive down the turnpike or get over a bridge is just ridiculous. How do we lure businesses to the state of New Jersey? How do we increase job opportunities in this state of New Jersey? Where do you see opportunity for growth? I've heard about casino changes in the casino industry. Where do you really see the opportunity? And by the way, I love what you're doing, keep it up. But where can we help this young lady?
Well, there's a few things. First of all, we're starting to do it. I mean, I'm not gonna brag about this, that now, when I came into office, we were ranked 50th among all the states by the CEOs across the country in terms of business friendliness, and now after two years, we're 45th. Now, I'm not gonna, like, dance over 45, but it's five spots better than 50, okay? So we're moving in the right direction. And how are we getting there? We're getting there because we've instituted $2.3 billion in business tax cuts for small and large businesses in the state. There's being phased in, we had, year one was this past year, and it's gonna phase in over the next three years. That's helping to make our corporate business tax more competitive than it was before. We also got rid of the corporate business tax surcharge that was on there by Governor Corzine that we got rid of. Secondly, we're lowering regulation in the state. And those regulations, you know, cost a ton of money, they're a hidden tax. And we, in our first year, reduced the amount of regulation from the last year of the Corzine administration by one-third in one year. And the Lieutenant Governor's continuing to eliminate more and more regulation that costs people money and makes no sense in terms of keeping people or products safe in our state. Where we're gonna try to emphasize is to build on the things that New Jersey has done really well in the past. We've been great on technology, great in biotech and pharma. These are really good, high-paying jobs, and we're surrounded by them here. And, and, when you say what attracts people still to this state, what attracts people to this state, is that every grade of the type of employee you have in New Jersey, we are near the top of the list in terms of how highly skilled they are, how highly educated they are. And remember, despite all these costs that we have that we're trying to bring down, there is still something very attractive about living here. The region of the country that we live in, the access that we have not only inside our own state to a lot of really great opportunities in terms of schools and universities and places for families to enjoy their lives as they're growing up and raising their kids, but also because of our access to places like New York City and Philadelphia and the convenience we have and economic opportunity that offers as well, for folks to be able to commute back and forth to those places. We're not gonna fix the out-of-control costs overnight, because they're baked in. And so what we need to do is look for ways to incentivize folks to come to our state. I'll give you a perfect example. Right here in Morris County, in my first or second week on the job, I got a call from officials inside the county telling me that Honeywell was getting ready to leave. And, you know, there's a major employer in Morris Township, with a lot of really good-paying jobs and a major property taxpayer in Morris Township as well. Would've been disastrous for the town, would've been very difficult for those employees who either would've had to choose to move or to lose their jobs. I called the CEO of Honeywell down to my office for a meeting, and he said to me, "Listen, I've already decided to move, Governor, I'm sorry, we have to do it on your watch, but, you know, we tried to get the attention of the last guy for months and months and months, and we couldn't get a returned phone call." Well, that's the first problem, right? Now, if you're Governor of the state of New Jersey and a major international corporation like Honeywell, the CEO's calling you, he's not calling you just to say, "How's your day?" You know? And most of the time, in my experience now, it's not usually good news. So you gotta get on top of that right away. We did, we brought him down, we met with him. And he told me about the incentives he's being offered by this other state. And I said, "So let me ask you a question. If I can match those incentives in a week, will you stay?" And he said, "Well, you can't." And I said, "Well, humor me." He said, "Governor, you're never able to get this, you're new at this, you're never gonna be able to get this done in a week, you know, don't put yourself through it, it's done, we're moving." I said, "I'm asking you a direct question, will you answer me? If I give you the same incentives, will you stay? And give me one week to do it?" And he said, "Yes. If you do it in a week, I'll stay." I said, "Okay," and I stood up, I said, "It's great meeting you, I got work to do." Sit up, we shook hands. Six days later, I called him and said, "What's your email address?" And he said, "Why?" And I said, "Because I'm sending you the letter for you to sign for staying. We've achieved everything that you've achieved with this other state." And he said, "Really?" I said, "Yeah, I'll email it to you, call me back." He called me back, and he said, "I got the letter." I said, "Well, I was a man of my word, are you a man of yours?" And he said, "Yes." And so Honeywell's not only staying, but they're expanding here. Part of this... You can put all kinds of programs in place. You can create an economic environment through your policies that make things better. But in the end, these decisions are still human decisions also. That guy looked across the table at me, and he knew I meant business. And six days later, he knew I meant business even more. And so he now has a sense of comfort as a CEO, who's got a fiduciary duty to shareholders, saying, "Look, listen, I'm staying here because I can count on this guy. If we have a problem, we can go to him and talk about it, and he'll listen. And more than listen, he'll act if he thinks we're right." And so I think that's part of what we need to do too. Because part of this is reputational, right? Over a period of years, we've gotten the reputation of being an unfriendly place to do business. You can't get rid of it overnight, but the way you can get rid of it more quickly is to work harder at it, and to be more aggressive at it. And that's what both me and the Lieutenant Governor are doing, we are being aggressive. The Lieutenant Governor goes to business meetings around the state, and she gives out her cellphone number. And people think it's like a fake cellphone number. So then they call it, and she answers it. And I can't tell you how many business owners, small business owners I've had, who say, "I called her, and later in the day with a problem, she answered it herself, she took down the problem, later in the day she got back to me and it was solved." That's what engenders confidence in a community as well, that they have a government who wants to be a partner, not a cop. You know, so that's what we're trying to do. And, like I said to you, this has been a decade or more of neglect and bad choices, bad policies, that we're not gonna turn around overnight. But 70,000 new private sector jobs since February of 2010, when we got here, in places like Honeywell, BASF, I could go through a whole list of Bayer, of people who are willing to stay and expand here, because they feel like they finally have an administration that gets it, is willing to work with them. That's the way we're gonna try to do it. That's the way we're gonna make this a place where she can go to college here, graduate from college here, get a great job here, and raise a family here. And that's the hope of what we're trying to get done, is to make it so that our lives are what our lives are gonna be in the main, hers and their future is what really matters. And so I'm gonna work really hard to make sure that somebody who's smart as that, who can ask that kind of question, that we keep her here. We don't want her going to, like, Massachusetts for college, right? You know, and then you'll get your first job in Massachusetts, you'll fall in love with some guy in Massachusetts, call your parents and tell them you're staying in Massachusetts. We don't want that. We want you to stay here, we want you to stay in New Jersey and meet somebody great here, there's lots of great guys here. And now we just gotta make lots of great jobs here as well, to make sure that you can have the kind of career, the kind of life you wanna have. And listen, I didn't make you the point of this, he did, but, but you represent what we're fighting for. She represents what we're fighting for, what we care about the most. So let me just end with this. I told you at the top, and I think the relationships I have with people like Cory Booker and Steve Sweeney and Sandy Cunningham and Brian Stack and others, shows you I'm willing to work with Democrats who are willing to be reasonable with me, and we've gotten a lot of stuff done over the last two and a half years that people thought we would never, ever get done. But it doesn't get done by saying "Mother, may I," and "please" all the time. Sometimes it gets done, because you're willing to fight, and because they know you're willing to fight, and because they know I'm willing to take the fight to all of you and ask you to back me up to get the things done that you elected me to do. I am under no illusion that you all elected me for my charm and good looks. All right? You elected me, I think, because you knew how off-track this state was. You thought maybe elect someone just stubborn enough, and just tough enough, who'd been a prosecutor for seven years, to put this thing back in order. And of all the different polls you'll see, and you're gonna be inundated with polls now for the next number of months, on everything. But I will tell you the one I'm most proud of. In November of 2009, as we were getting ready for the gubernatorial election that I was running against John Corzine in, they asked folks, the question they ask you all the time in these polls, "Do you think your state's moving in the right direction, or do you think it's off on the wrong track?" The eve of that election, 19% of New Jerseyans said they thought their state was moving in the right direction. 19%. Less than 1 in 5 New Jerseyans said they thought their state was moving in the right direction. Again, today, another poll came out, and I think it's the fourth or fifth one in a row. They asked people, "Do you think your state's moving in the right direction, or do you think it's off on the wrong track?" 53% of New Jerseyans now believe, after just two and a half years of this administration, that our state's moving in the right direction. That's important, because that's not about me. My numbers about me will go up or down based primarily upon what comes out of my mouth from week to week. Sometimes I'll make people angry, and sometimes I'll make them happy, and those numbers will go up and down. But that one is about how you feel about each other, how we feel about ourselves. We're starting to feel proud again about this state. We're starting to feel like we're setting an example again for our country, that those are the things that really matter. Are we setting a good example for those kids? Are we creating, as he's concerned about, a state where they can grow up prosperously and happily and raise their families here? Are we moving in the right direction? It's a great question. And, you know, before these last four polls over the last two months, the last time New Jerseyans felt that way was in March of 2004, eight years ago. For eight years, more New Jerseyans felt like the state was off on the wrong track. And it's not just because they're optimistic about everything, because much less than 50% of the people in New Jersey think our country's moving in the right direction. So they can, you all make a difference in your mind between whether the country's moving in the right direction, whether New Jersey's moving in the right direction. You're saying the country isn't, but New Jersey is. That's not because of me, it's because of the policies we're pursuing, because we're fighting for the things that are big, that matter, not the little things, but the big things that'll help to make this state a great place again. So I am gonna fight. You get ready for it over the next 46 days, and I guarantee you, the minute I start fighting, you know what's gonna happen. People in the media are gonna put me on the couch again. You know they love to do that. Why is this guy so angry? Why is he so blunt? How could he have possibly said that? What did his parents or teachers do to him as a kid to make him this way? So I'm gonna clear that issue up for you all today. That's the way we're gonna end. You don't have to worry about listening to what they say about why I am the way I am. I will tell you, from the horse's mouth, why I am the way I am. We are all products of our parents. Like it or not, good and bad, we're all products of our parents. And I have an Irish father, who's 79-years-old a couple weeks ago, and he comes to a lot of these meetings. He's not here today, but he comes to a lot of them, and if he were here today, well, what happened is, he'd stay afterwards, and he'd talk to all of you, and he'd tell you embarrassing stories about me as a kid. And he'd brag about his grandchildren. And then by the end of the conversation, he'd be hugging you, whether you wanted to be hugged or not. And that's kinda who he is. He's this really gregarious, outgoing guy. Now, on the other hand, I had a Sicilian mother. Now, for those of you in this room who have some experience with that, you know that it's an entirely different kettle of fish. I say all the time, even when my father's here, that in our house, in the automobile of life, my father was merely a passenger. Mom drove the car. Yeah. Mom made the decisions, mom set the standards, she set the rules, she was judge, jury, and executioner. And she particularly liked that last part. And you heard in the video, you know, she said, "Be yourself, and then, you know, you won't have to worry about remembering tomorrow who you pretended to be yesterday." That was one of her lines, and, you know, she had a number of other bits of advice for me over time. Now, I said I had a Sicilian mother, because eight years ago this month, she passed away. And she died of lung cancer, she was a lifetime smoker. And when she got sick, she got sick really quickly, and the end of her life came very quickly. And as she was nearing the end of her life, I was at a, at a national conference, I was U.S. Attorney at the time, I was at a national conference out in San Diego. And my younger brother, Todd, called me, and he said, "Listen, they started to give mom morphine, she's really taking a turn for the worse. If you want a chance to talk to her, you gotta get home now." So I got on a red-eye flight that night out of San Diego, and I flew through the night home, and got to Newark Airport, got in my car, drove to St. Barnabas Hospital, right over here in Livingston, where she was. When I got there, she was kinda in and out of things. So I sat there for a while, and she eventually came to. And first thing she said to me, before she even said hello, she looked at me, she said, "What day is it?" I said, "It's Friday." She said, "What time is it?" I said, "It's 9:30 in the morning." And she said, "Go to work." I was like, "Mom, listen, I decided to take the day off, I'm taking the day off, I'm gonna spend it with you." And she said to me, "It is a workday, Christopher, go to work." And I'm like, "What, are you afraid you're not getting your taxpayers' money's worth? Like, don't worry, I'll make up the time." She reached over, and she grabbed my hand, and she said, "Christopher, go to work, it's where you belong, there's nothing left unsaid between us." She was giving me permission. She gave me permission to leave and to let her go. And I tell you that story, because that isn't just something she said at her bedside to me as she knew she was dying. It was something she insisted upon all the years we were growing up. My mother's philosophy was, if you're in a trusting relationship with someone, that you need to tell them everything, how you feel, what you think, that if you're in a[1767.83] truly trusting relationship, you don't wait until that last moment at the side of the bed when life is coming to an end and try to fit everything in. You don't leave anything unsaid. And so I know that if my mom were still alive today, to see this circus that my life has become, that she would say to me, "Chris, these folks trusted you with the most important job they can give. They trusted you to be their governor, and they trusted you to be their governor during an incredibly difficult and scary time. Tell them what you think. Tell them how you feel. Don't let them guess. They deserve better than that." So you know, sometimes that means you're going to, I'm sure, have opened the newspaper in the morning and read something I said and said to yourself, "I cannot believe he said that." And hopefully, there are other times where you open up the paper or turn on the TV and you hear me say something, and you say to yourself, "I'm really glad someone finally said that out loud. We needed to have it said." But whatever it is, that's me. And it's me because of her, because that's the way she taught me to be. And so, you know, I got a four-year contract with all of you. And I don't know whether I'm going to run for reelection or not in 2013, but if I do, you know, you're going to have a choice to make. I guarantee you this, you won't go into the voting booth and say to yourself, "Jeez, I wonder who this guy is. I wonder what he's thinking. I wonder how he felt about things that were going on in the state the last three years. I don't really know him." I may turn out not to be your cup of tea, and you may vote for somebody else. That's your choice. But you won't vote for somebody else because you don't know me. And so my obligation, my obligation, based on the way I was raised and who I am, is to tell you what I think and how I feel. That's what you're always going to get from me. You're going to get the truth as I see it, and I'm going to say it loudly and clearly so that there's no doubt in your mind what I think. And for those of you who love it, that's great.